Good evening. We're going to begin tonight with a presentation of a proclamation for hospice awareness month. And Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
While they come up, Mr. President, thank you. So we have a group of ladies here tonight representing hospice programs. They're specifically with affinity. But I was telling before the meeting that in all the years that I've managed write-outs, I've never heard a bad word about hospice. And we watch across our city hundreds of families come in that have benefited from your service and your colleague's service. So tonight, not only do we want to honor the hospice workers, but also bring attention to some of the things that they do. So we have a proclamation, and I'd like to read it. It's National Hospice and Palative Care Month, November 2018. Whereas as Medicare's first proven coordinated care model, hospice is a program that works offering person-centered compassionate care, ensuring people dignity, choice, and quality of life. And whereas the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. And whereas beyond providing physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs, and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. And whereas in increasingly fragmented and broken healthcare system, hospice is one of the few sectors that demonstrates how healthcare can and should work at its best for its patient. And whereas a growing body of peer-reviewed research indicates that timely access to hospice and palliative care can decrease hospitalizations and emergency room visits and increase quality of life for patients and family caregivers. And whereas every year, more than 1.5 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families received care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States. And whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that help individuals make decisions about the care they want. And whereas the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospice, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patient choices and access to individual services based on a patient's unique care needs and wishes. So now therefore, I, Scott McBrayer, Mayor of the City of Homewood, hereby proclaim November 2018 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month in the City of Homewood. Encourage all of our residents to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. And again, ladies, on behalf of everyone in the City of Homewood, thank you so much for all you do for the patients and their families. So, good.
Thank you.
Okay. Come on around. And we're going to give you her camera and let you get a picture with her. Ladies, thank you all again. Thank you for being here. That's yours?
Oh.
Too much work to put it together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes. All right. We will call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with an invocation which I'll deliver, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand with me. Bow with me, please. Lord God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather and serve. Lord God, at this point, we pray for wisdom from you who is the ultimate source of wisdom. We pray that you'll guide us in the decisions that we make. Lord, may we always have an attitude of service, have a servant's heart, for that's how you would have us to be. All of this, we lift up, in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Burgett, if you'll call it all, please.
Yes, sir.
Does he pause?
Mr. Gualtney.
Here.
Mr. Thames.
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Mr. Wolverton.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Mrs. Andrus.
Here.
Mr. Wright. And Mr. Limbaugh.
Here. So we have a quorum, and the next item is the reading of the minutes from November 5th, 2018. And the Chair would welcome a motion for dispensing of those readings and approval of said minutes.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Board vacancies or appointments, are you all aware of any?
I actually need to open up the Ward 4 position on the Homewood Environmental Commission. Kay Simon, our current Ward 4 representative, has had an increase in her job responsibilities and needs to resign her spot. So I'd like to open that up for applications. And I know we normally do it for a month, but that would put us right before Christmas. I kind of feel like maybe just extend it into whatever the first meeting is in January. I don't know what our schedule is for January.
Hold on a second. 14?
14.
14. We can extend it because of holidays, 60 days.
Yeah, because I feel like that's going to, it'll get lost in the holidays. So let's go ahead and open it up and put the deadline for applications due in for 1/14, January 14.
And we will do that. Any other?
At 4:30?
Yes, 4:30, yes.
1/14 of 19, 2019. Okay. All right. We have quite a few items to add to the agenda tonight, so if you'll bear with me. We have two for the consent agenda. One is 150918, request to set a public hearing for a variance to the signed ordinance at 2:0... Help me.
1:01.
2:01, okay. Drawn a line through that. Vulcan Road. Requested by Robert Norris, Greg Cobb, with our BEZ folks. The other one for consent would be 061118, which is request to vacate an alley at 1710 Ridgewood Place, requested by Barry Smith and Will Oliver. That's our two consent agenda items. The following are old business items. 071118, request for consideration of a Homewood Environmental Commission project on the Shades Creek Greenway Trail, requested by Kay Simon and Greg Cobb. Next would be 011118, which is request for consideration of a three-way stop sign at the intersection of Wood Fern Drive and 16th Terrace, requested by Andy Gualtney. The next one, also old business, would be 221118, request for consideration for adjustment to no parking on 26th Avenue South, requested by Brett Thames. And finally, a committee referral agenda item, which is 401118, request to consider Huntington Road as a one-way. This is from Peter and Kelly Chapin and Jennifer Andrus with Public Safety, and it would be referred to Public Safety Committee. All right? Are there any other items to add to the agenda?
Yes. Do we remember 121018, the public hearing to both divisions for economic sense? Is that the correct item number?
Yes, it is. And this is requested by Walter Jones and Barry Smith, is what I have down?
Yes.
Okay. Good. All right. So this is the amendments to the agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mr. Gualtney. Okay. Anything else to discuss on that? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Good. All right. So this is the amendments to the agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mr. Gualtney. Okay. Anything else to discuss on that? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Good. All right. We will move on. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Same age.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Ms. Smith, second from Ms. Andrus. Any further discussion? There be none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is passed unanimously. Okay. We will move on to old business agenda. 221018, public hearing continued from November 5th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of declaring the property located at 1509 Beckham Drive a public nuisance due to the violation of ordinance 1098 litter and ordinance 1310, open and unenclosed storage, and ordinance 1750 and 1910, excessive growth. Mr. Cook.
Yes, this property is owned by Stacy Lee Heckathorn. Ever since we posted the property and sent out the letters, I've been in constant contact with the occupant. He has done a lot of work, as you can see in the pictures, the before and after pictures. And I believe he's here tonight.
Good. All right. Is there anyone else who wants to talk to this item? While Mr. Cook's up here, is there any questions for him?
Mr. Cook, has it been remedied to your satisfaction?
Yes, it is.
The pictures look good. The pictures have gone with speaking full story.
Correct. It does, and it does meet the ordinance.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else going to speak to this item? If not, we will close this public hearing. And your recommendation, Mr. Cook, is?
That it meets the ordinance, and I recommend a drop.
Okay. All right. Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from?
Second.
Ms. Andrus.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. 181018, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of condemning a house at 1801 Kensington Road. So let us open this public hearing. I would say anyone who wants to speak to this item, please register with Mr. Burgett, your name and address, and then plan on approaching the microphone. Mr. Pew.
Yes, sir. Good evening. You'll probably see up on the monitors, but I've also put in front of you pictures. I've got all four of the condemnation items clipped together up there. The first one, 1801 Kensington Road, I've provided you with a code violations report. It lists property maintenance code violations as well as some unsafe conditions. This house suffers from a great deal of neglect. As you can see, that there are seedlings growing out of the gutters all around. A lot of the eaves have collapsed and water's getting in. There's plants growing into the house. There's a power line that's draped across the backyard, low enough where you could walk up to it and touch it. There is power on the meter. I don't know that there's necessarily power to the house. It's a smart meter, so they can disable, they can disable power remotely, but obviously I didn't want to test it out. But as you can see, there are busted windows, just a whole laundry list of items. My recommendation is that this property is unsafe to the extent that it's a public nuisance, as it could house pests of all sorts, mold, and there are actually ways to get in the house if you wanted to.
So it's not secure?
It's not secure, no. There's some broken windows and things that, and since it's unoccupied at the moment, there wouldn't be anybody to really stop somebody from getting in.
I understand. Any questions, Mr. Pew?
Mr. Pew, does it appear anyone has been in the house? Like people in the neighborhood, like kids in the neighborhood, or someone, you know, because I know we've had a couple of houses where children have gone in or teenagers have been hanging out.
Can I answer that, Wyatt?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes. There have been people accessing the structure, and not people who should be accessing the structure. And I did not know about the power line in the backyard, but that's even more scary because they've been coming in through the back.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Ma'am, did you want to speak to this? Just state your name and address when you get to the mic, please.
I'm Beth Wilson. I'm 1803 Kensington Road, and I am immediately next door. So I just, I guess, you know, follow up with that and just say the property's definitely unsafe. You know, and living next door, I can hear some of what goes on. I'm glad I do not hear all of what goes on, or I would not feel safe. I live alone. I do know that the house has actually been broken into. I know at one point, the police were called out there. And I also know that, like, business papers and information with Ms. Statham's address were found as far away as Vestavia. In addition to what you know as far as the windows, I spoke with somebody from the city who was out to inspect the property, and I pointed out to them, at one point, there was a wrought iron retaining rail that kind of went around a patio that's raised in the backyard. Somebody got there, back there, and pushed that down, you know, and there was no debris around. It's not like a large limb could have fallen on it. It almost looked like somebody was trying to push that down to find a different way to access the house. So, you know, with that said, I mean, mentioned the, you know, I don't know if you've mentioned that there is a hole in the roof. You know, it's just not a safe situation, and I've mentioned before, as far as my situation personally, you know, there's a tree that kind of grows dangerously out from that property that is not healthy, that needs to come down. And then furthermore, the fence is, you know, falling down, and it's, you know, and there's nothing I can do to make repairs with the property in the situation that it's in. There's no way for me to access the property. So, and also, I've just, you know, kind of re-confirmed again with five of the top real estate agents in Homewood, and they're telling me that those of us that are immediately adjacent, as well as when I shot at this property, we're looking at at least 10% right off the top of the market value of our homes. So we're effectively locked into our houses until something is done, or we lose a lot of money.
Question?
Yes.
How long would you estimate it's been in this kind of condition?
It has been slowly getting worse over the last couple of years that she lived there, but it was, there was maintenance ongoing as far as the yard. I had no idea what the inside of the home looked like. But I would say even, she's probably not lived there a couple of years now, and it's just continued to get worse. But I've really noticed, I guess it was early last summer that the house, I know for sure, was first broken into. And that's, you know, really, like I said, concerning for me, living in there by myself. And I don't think it's just kids in the neighborhood. And if it is, it's certainly unsafe for them to be back there.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Ms. Wilson?
I will say, I know Beth and I have been conversing about this for quite a, quite a long time, because it, and she is not the only neighbor who has reached out about the house. There are other neighbors that are close by who have asked about doing something about the house as well. And we have, Scott has made every effort to contact the family who is in the metro area, and we've had no, we've had no response from them. And it is, it's a dangerous, and it's, you know, it's in a lovely neighborhood, so it's unfortunate for the folks that do live around there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak to this matter? If not, we will close this public hearing. And I would welcome any comments from the council at this point. There be none, your chair would welcome a motion and a second for an action on this particular item.
I would move to pursue the condemnation of the property.
Okay. So we have a motion from Ms. Smith. We have a second from Ms.?
A second.
Okay. Good. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Actually, the resolution just determines it to be a public nuisance.
So we need a resolution or?
No, we have a resolution. You said condemnation.
Well, actually, it's on the agenda, it's condemning, but that's, the resolution is done for a reason.
The statute is clear about it. It says unsafe building creates a public nuisance, regardless of what the agenda says.
This will be Resolution 18169. Thank you, Ms. Andrus. I appreciate that. Okay. Next item, 191018, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of condemning a house at 1569 Valley View Circle. And we will open this public hearing. Mr. Pew.
Yes, sir. I've also provided you with a code violations report listing unsafe conditions as well as property maintenance violations. The pictures that I provided you are from my inspection late last week. The bulk of the problems with this house stem from the roof, the lack of maintenance of the roof. I would say that I was contacted late last week by the owner of the property, who has actually been in contact with me on and off. He's an elderly gentleman living away from this house with his son. He let me know that the house had been sold and that there would be a closing today. So I asked him to have the new owner call me. The new owner, in fact, did call me today and leave me a message and let me know that the closing did happen. And he, he and his wife have a laundry list of improvements. They're actually planning to gut the place and totally remodel it. I called him back, left him a message that there were some immediate things I wanted him to address as far as making sure the property was secure, and that we needed to get together and talk about that. I didn't, I haven't heard back from him since that last message. But his request was that the city council perhaps either extend this to where he could have some time to prove that he is actually going to do the work, or drop it altogether. I can't say that I recommend doing that, only because I haven't spoken with him directly yet and gotten a commitment from him to do these certain things that will need to be done to secure the property. But all in all, there's, I'm sorry, excuse me. Go ahead.
After you.
I was just going to say, all in all, the house is in very questionable condition only because of the roof. It does not appear that anyone's been getting in the house. There's an area in the basement where there's a door that's been left open, but I did go in there. You cannot access the inside of the house from that. It's a totally under part of the house. And there's really not anything in there. There's just a few buckets and such, but nothing of any real danger, so.
I have a question, but first, Mr. Gualtney, go.
I just wanted to clarify, if we did proceed with condemning this house, is it 30 or 60 days that they have to remedy those issues prior to?
No, they had 60 days before it gets there. They have 30 days under the state to appeal to the circuit court.
Okay.
That's all, that's the only time left. Yes, sir. I would send them? I have one issue that, I have some concern that have we served him notice since we noticed the owner with these defects? I might suggest that you continue the public hearing to the next meeting and ask him to be present and acknowledge that he knows about that, and then you take whatever action you want. This transfer of ownership is a kind of a gray area where we haven't actually given the owner of the property notice of the defects. Yes, a valid point.
I hear you, Mr. Kendrick. All right. My question is, what length of time would be reasonable if you have a new owner before they get a permit for the renovation of the particular property? Did I communicate well?
Yes, I think it would be certainly appropriate to, if you continue it to the December 3rd meeting, that should be sufficient, that he should take some aggressive action that satisfies Mr. Pew about his corrective action. I wouldn't, I wouldn't continue past that. That's why I would continue the public hearing, so that you don't have to renotice and start all over.
No, I understand, sir. But I guess my question was, you know, again, if you don't have the plans for renovation, you know, at what point do you say, hey, you got to have the plans, or we're going to condemn the building?
I think two weeks should be sufficient to get a plan that would satisfy Mr. Pew, but he could have to tell you if he's satisfied or not.
Okay.
I wouldn't propose more than that, based on the condition of the house.
Well, we'd certainly have a better view of where we are after two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Than what we have tonight.
Based on the tone of the message he left me, it sounds like they have some very definite plans in mind, so within two weeks, I ought to be able to have a pretty good timeline of, pretty good projected timeline of what's going to happen when.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Pew.
Yes, sir.
And we've got some individuals who would like to speak. Please, ma'am. Ladies, always first. Your name is?
Margie Hunt, and I live at 1515 Valley View Circle. It's about five doors down. I'm sorry, but Mr. Pew is mistaken that that back door that is open to the basement area does not allow access into the house. It does, directly. That door, according to the photo that I saw, goes into the unfinished basement area where they, they used to have a washer and dryer. But I've been in the house, I've looked at the house as a guest of the owner, as a possible buyer. Honestly, there were so many things wrong with that house that I hope that the people who have bought it have not really bought into a money pit, because it is in very bad repair. If you go in that basement door and you go to the right, you go into another room, and that room goes or has access to the steps that go up to the main living area. That one room in the basement, they had used for an exercise room. But you can go right up into the house. And as you can see from those photographs, yes, the house does have a serious roof problem, and it's had more than one serious roof problems over the past several years since it's been vacant. And they're very serious. It has ruined a lot of the inside of the house. And it's concerning to us in the neighborhood, not only because it's an eyesore, but because over a period of time, it too, as one of the prior speakers up here said, is causing our property values to go down as well. But it's just a very serious concern that it too could be accessed by someone who doesn't need to be there, and could cause problems in the neighborhood. But the main concern is, at this point, I'm glad to hear Mr. Pew and Mr. Kendrick say that the new owners, I have no idea. I don't know that anybody else does either. I don't really know whether this is a family that's going to live there and be there all the time, or has intention to do that, or whether it's somebody who's going to rent the house out, or just what. But that house is in very bad repair, and it has some really serious foundation problems, as well as the roof problems. And I think if it got to the point of the city becoming involved, there are a lot of code violations underneath, under the present code. But it's just got really, really serious problems. And I know what it was on the market for, and I think that whoever bought it, if they are very serious at all about renovating it, it's going to be really expensive. So I cannot imagine this body approving anything without plans that are verified in some way with the new owner. So I think that's just the best idea at this point, to get a serious commitment from the new owners and find out in black and white what they intend to do.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. I appreciate it, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. My name is Mark Waits. I live at 1517 Valley View Circle, about four houses to the west of the 69. I live at 1517 Valley View Circle, about four houses to the west of the 69 property. And I am very pleased to hear the progress relative to having a new owner take ownership of the responsibilities that come with that. So, that's, that's news, but before that did happen, I was going to ask the council for consideration and support to proceed with the condemnation of the property. The issues that Margie just mentioned are something that's been visible by myself, the family, as well as all the neighbors as well. And there's been a history of lack of maintenance there for several years. And it just seems appropriate that I would ask the council for consideration with it. And having said that, I understand there's a change in ownership and certainly, you know, the owner has a chance to address the concerns with that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Waits. We appreciate it, sir. All right, anyone else who wants to speak to this? All right, if, if there's not, what we're going to do is, at Mr. Kendrick's recommendation, I think it's absolutely valid, we're going to continue this on till the next council meeting. And we look forward to getting a detailed, let me emphasize the word detailed, report on what the intent of the new owners is at that point, okay? Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Pugh, can you, given that there's some question about the access to the home, can you make sure when you speak to the new owner tomorrow that regardless of when he comes in for his permit, he needs to secure this door immediately?
I most certainly will.
Could I suggest too, you tell him, inform him that we've continued this to give him, accommodate him, but if he doesn't attend the next meeting with a plan that's satisfactory, you then see, possibly could move forward with demolition.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, folks. We appreciate you taking your time to speak on this matter. We really do. All right, next, 2010-18, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of condemning the house at 1627 Salter Row. We will now open this public hearing. And again, turn to Mr. Pugh.
Thank you. I've provided you with a code violations report. The, the unsafe conditions on this house almost exclusively pertain to a carport addition, which is, as you can see from the pictures, is just collapsing all over the place. There's a wooden girder along the front which supports the whole structure, which is severely stressed and rotten. And I wasn't able to get a clear picture of just how rotten it is, but down, down at the bottom right, you can see, there's a portion of it on the side there where it's rotten. There's, there's abandoned, lots of abandoned rubbish and garbage and an abandoned vehicle But in looking as a whole, if the owner could take care of this carport, demolish it, that would, that would take care of the dangerous situation. I know that the owner has reached out to both me and Counselor Smith about some extenuating circumstances being suffered. And is there anything that you would like to?
Yeah, I, Mr. Pears, like Mr. Pugh said, Mr. Pears has reached out to both Wyatt and myself. I spoke to him at length last week. And he, I think probably because he's in a very similar situation to what I recently experienced with my own mom, he is caring for his elderly mother, who is the owner of the house, at his home in Huntsville, although she's been in the hospital for the last 40 days. And he has made an effort. He came down, when was that, Scott, probably?
Three weeks ago?
About three, yeah, less than a month ago, removed one of the cars, one of the vehicles that was in the driveway that had been there for a long time and had it hauled away, removed a refrigerator that was there, did maintenance on all, both the yards, front and backyard, got rid of some trash that was in the front of the house. There is still a lot to be done, and he knows that. But he has asked for our, for our consideration of his circumstances and allow him to have, till after the beginning of the year. I spoke to him today and told him that because he feels like this is probably the last time that he's going to have with his mom at the holidays, that we were willing to grant that, but that Mr. Pugh and I would be getting together with Alex and Mr. Cook, coming up with a very specific list of items that have to be addressed as soon as possible at the beginning of the year. And that, that list, and he knows what that list is, and he knows that list is predominantly centered around that carport and that rubbish. But that we would allow him to do that if that was the council's choice and give him the time with his mom until the beginning of the year, and then he will address these items. And I will say, I did hear from a neighbor who was extremely excited that the truck had been removed. That was one of their main complaints, was this old broken down truck that had been in the driveway for several years. And he did have that hauled away.
The old broken down Cherokee looks even worse.
Yes, well, apparently it runs. Apparently it runs. I know.
Does it?
I know. He knows that that's on the shortlist of things that have to go away, but yes, so. He has made efforts. Unlike some of the people that we never hear from, he has been in communication with both Mr. Pugh and myself. And I really think he is going to get this taken care of because, I mean, it's in only his best interest to sell the property at some point. And he can't sell it like it is in its current condition, so.
Any other comments on this, Mr. Pugh?
Just one. If, if it's in the council's wishes to go ahead and give him a little extra time and let us put together a list, that would be fine. I would like to ask him, if possible, to go ahead and put up some sort of a barrier around this, if he's going to, if there's going to be any amount of time, even before the holidays get here. It would be nice if he could, even just some sort of a temporary.
Then, well, unless there's anyone else here that wants to speak to this particular matter, my recommendation is we carry it over for tonight, but that barrier, there needs to be substantive evidence that that barrier is in place by the next meeting, okay?
Understood.
Would you like to call him or do you want me to? I'm happy to do.
Okay, if you don't mind, it sounds like you have a better report.
I mean, I'll admit to you, I'm pretty offended by the place.
Yeah.
And I drive by there multiple times every week and.
Yeah, I do, too.
Well, and I just, I have a question.
Sure.
Do we know how long the, the owner has been, I guess, dealing with his mother and her issues?
She, I think, if my timeline is right, she went to live with him. It has not been that long. She was in the house alone up until, I would say, probably about this time last year. Maybe not even that long. It may have been even just like this past spring.
Okay.
It is not, it's, she hasn't been gone for like two years or three years or anything like that.
Well, I just, I say that to make the point that this house has looked like this-
Yeah, for a long time.
Multiple years.
Yes, right, agree.
They have two boys, one of them's a lawyer.
He, according, again, this is just from my conversations with him, there are two siblings. There's a sister and a brother. But they are not, they are not helping him with the care of the mom. He is pretty much doing that on his own in Huntsville.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? If not, we're going to carry this one over and we'll, we'll look forward to-
To December 3rd?
December 3rd, yes, sir. All right, next item, 2110-18, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of condemning the house at 2827 16th Place South. Again, Mr. Pugh. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I've provided you with a code violations report where there are multiple, multiple unsafe issues with this house, not only just maintenance violations. They're seriously unsafe. The top left picture shows what it looks like from the front, which you almost wouldn't know there was anything there. I've fought my way through there and got up to the house and it's just, the smell is overwhelming, the smell of mold. There's a, there's a giant hole in the roof, right in the center of the place, that's just been dumping water in, there's plants growing in. There's just rubbish and garbage just piled, piled, in every conceivable corner of this place. And it's, it's dangerous just to simply walk up as close as I did. So, for a multitude of reasons, I would recommend this place be declared a nuisance.
Any other questions of Mr. Pugh? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak to this particular matter? If there is not, we will close this public hearing and the chair would welcome a motion for approval of 2110-18.
Salute.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, who was first? Mr. Waltney first?
Give it to Ward one.
Be second, that's fine. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is Resolution 18-170, and thank you very much.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
I'm assuming Wyatt, that you put these together. I just want to say thank you because this is, this is really well done and it makes it easy to see and to clarify what, what issues are wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolverton. That was a good comment. Absolutely, I agree. All right, 0811-18, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the sign. Ordinance at 417 Crest Drive, requested initially by John Henderson and Greg Cobb. We will open this public hearing. Mr. Cobb.
Yes, sir. This is a corner lot, so corner lots actually have two fronts. And Mr. Henderson's here to address it. We did call it up in the meeting earlier today, a picture of it, and there's a row of hedges there, and I'd like for Mr. Henderson to speak to where he would like the fence to be.
All right, sure. Brian, do we have, we have that picture or no?
No, he didn't.
No, that was in, I think.
I understand. Mr. Henderson, you live at, obviously, 417-
Yes, 417 Crest Drive.
Okay. Is it 407 or 417?
41, 417.
417, okay, good. Go. The floor is yours, sir.
Um, I was, I've been looking at my backyard and I have two fences that need to be replaced and I'd like to go ahead and continue that on the Salter Lane side of my property. Looking into the ordinances, how it's stated now, I can only go 10 foot out from the side of my house, but with a variance, I could go 15 more foot over to the property line. Right around where the bushes are currently is where I'd like to put my, my fence up. It would be no closer than the property line. But, anyway, I was just trying to get this ball rolling to try to improve my property.
We understand, Mr. Henderson. We tend to be visually motivated.
Yes, sir.
And it's a little hard to approve something without being able to see it.
Right.
Let me ask you this. Tonight seems to be continuing public hearing night, but if we were to continue this until December 3rd, could you bring us some drawings and some things that we could show the public?
Yes, sir. I can.
Would, would that be something you as a council would like?
Yes, that would be a good point.
Okay, I agree. All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate you. We will continue this public hearing. We may set a record here, Mr. Kendrick, but it's okay. All right, 0911-18, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance for Little Professor Book Center at 2844 18th Street South, from Stephanie Cruz, as well as Wyatt Pugh. We will open this public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to that matter? I was told there was not, so we will close this public hearing.
I would make a motion to drop this item.
All right, so we have a motion for Ms. Smith to drop. We have a second for Mr. McCluskey.
They don't want.
They have an issue with their landlord about being actually able to do what they want to accomplish, okay? So, if there's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on. 1010-18, public hearing set for December 3rd, 2018, for consideration of zoning ordinance changes requested by Mr. Thames, and that is so set for December 3rd. 1011 of 18, bid opening set for December 6th, 2018 at 4:00 PM for a police tactical van requested by Chief Ross and Captain Sutton, and that is carried over for the bid, okay? We move on to 18, excuse me, I'm sorry, 1808, 18, request for consideration to contract for citywide traffic study, Mr. Waltney and Mr. Thames.
And I apologize, when I requested this to Robert, this was meant for a new agenda item, just to go to planning and development, just to, to have an update on the plan for the study. And I should have mentioned that at the beginning when we were amending the agenda, but I forgot.
I did, I did mention that, but Mr. Kendrick said it needs to stay on because the contract had been completed, is that correct?
The ALDOT contract has not.
It needs to stay on as, as.
Okay.
So, we will carry this over.
Okay.
And continue on. 0909-18, request for consideration to renew the AT&amp;T U-verse contract requested by our mayor and Terry Williams with AT&amp;T. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Salute.
Motion from Ms. Andrews, second from Ms. Smith. Any further questions of anyone? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 18-171.
Oh, I understand.
Well, okay, so we have one abstention from Mr. Waltney. All right, the next item, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just a question on the, the previous item, 1808-18. Britt, did you, did you want to keep it the same agenda item and send it back to PND or did you want to keep it here?
Well, Mr. Kendrick says we need to, we need to keep this item here. I'll-
No, sir, that's not what I said.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was, yeah.
I misunderstood.
Yeah. Well, all I said is that the ALDOT contract has not been signed. And it had an agenda number that was assigned as 1808-18.
Okay.
That's all I said.
Yeah, I was just, I was going to-
Before you will get the contract, the work done, we'll have to approve the contract.
Sure.
Yeah, I was going to ask whether or not you wanted to send it back to PND or just keep it on here.
All right, good. Next item, 0711-18, quest for consideration of a Homewood Environmental Commission project on Shades Creek Greenway Trail requested by Kay Simon, Greg Cobb, our BZ department. A report from-
Special issues.
Special issues. Ms. Smith.
The committee met, committee met right before this meeting and heard a presentation from HEC. They would like to do some signage on the trail, bringing attention to some of the wildlife that's out there, also some of the tree plantings that they've done. So, this, we voted it out four to zero to recommend approving them to do that. They've still got work to do in terms of putting the sign together actually and making sure they have a location that they want for it, but this just allows them the chance to do that. And that motion was made, I'm going to say, by Mr. McCluskey and seconded by Mr. Waltney, and it came out a committee four to zero.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by the committee. Do we have any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That wasn't an opposed, okay, good. That's Resolution 18-172. And we'll move on to 0111, 0111-18, which is a request for consideration of a three-way stop sign at the intersection of Wood Fern Drive and 16th Terrace, requested by Mr. Waltney. Start with a report from Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met earlier tonight and voted out four to zero for the approval of a three-way stop sign at, or three-way stop at Wood Fern Drive and 16th Terrace. It was made by Mr. Thames, seconded by Mrs. Andrews.
All right, good. First reading, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood and provide penalties for the violation thereof. Section 1, every person, firm or corporation operating a motor vehicle in west direction on and along Wood Fern Drive should cause a motor vehicle to come to complete stop intersection Wood Fern, Wood Fern Drive with an easterly right-of-way line, 16th Terrace. Section 2, any person operating a motor vehicle in an easterly direction along Wood Fern Drive should cause a motor vehicle to come to complete stop intersection Wood Fern Drive with a westerly right-of-way line of 16th Terrace. Section 3, any person operating a motor vehicle in a northerly direction along 16th Terrace should cause a motor vehicle to come to complete stop intersection 16th Terrace with a southerly right-of-way line of Wood Fern Drive. Section 4, any violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 5, the chief of police shall erect or cause to be erect lines, markings or signage as authorized by sections 1-3 above. Section 6, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent. Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mr. Waltney. Roll call, please.
Sir. Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes. So, this is ordinance 2721, and Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Salute. Second.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, again from Mr. Waltney, second. Roll call again, please.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrews?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes. So, 2721 passes unanimously. Next item is 221118, request for consideration for adjustment to no parking on 26th Avenue South. Report, Mr. McCluskey.
Yes, Mr. President. The committee met earlier and voted four to zero for the consideration to adjust the no parking on 26th Avenue. The specifics, I believe, are gonna be coming from Mr. Handley in the Traffic Maintenance Department, and we'll get that to Mr. Kendrick, but it was voted four to zero, brought out by Mr. Thames, seconded by Mr. Wolverton.
Good. So, we will carry this item over until we have all the particulars, as we shall say, taken care of, all right? Next item, committee referral agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Salute. Second.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mr. Waltney. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Other new business. 311118, request set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues Committee for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 1808 29th Avenue South, requested by Tom Coger, C-O-G-E-R, and Greg Cobb with our BEZ. We will set that for December 3rd, 2018 at 6:00 p.m. Is that okay? Good. 321118, request set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance, fence ordinance, I'm sorry, at 1136 Hardwick Lane, requested by Lauren Vander...
Bill. Vanderbill. It's Vanderbill.
Okay. And Greg Cobb, and again, to Special Issues, and that public hearing too will be set December 3rd, 2018. 331118, request set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues for consideration to the fence ordinance at 327 Kinnellworth Drive, requested by Kelly Handley, Greg Cobb, our BEZ department. We will also set that public hearing for December 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Next, 341118, request for consideration of an ABC O2O retail, restaurant retail liquor license for Jim Arco Pizza doing business as Pizzeria GM located at 600 Oak Grove Road, requested by Robert Burgett, our acting city clerk. Motion and a second.
I would move to approve, having no objection to issuance of the license.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. McCluskey, and we have a second from Ms. Smith. If there are no other items of discussion on this particular matter, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Just for clarification, Mr. President, we have received both letters from police and fire.
Good, thank you. All right, next, 351118, request for consideration of an ABC O2O restaurant retail liquor license for Saul's Barbecue Homewood LLC doing business as Saul's located at 1006 Oxmore Road, again requested by Mr. Burgett. Chair would again welcome a motion and a second.
Salute.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. McCluskey. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. 361118, request for consideration of an ABC O40 retail beer on and off premises, and O60 retail table wine on and off premises license for SK88 LLC DBA, The Seafood King located at 180 State Farm Parkway. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Salute.
Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from.
Second.
Mr. Thames. And I'm going to assume that we have, okay, from both departments.
That is correct.
Okay. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is passed. 371118, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period of November 5th, 2018 through November 18th, 2018, and my understanding is that Ms. Smith has reviewed these said documents.
I have, and I had several questions, which Mr. Burgett answered for me earlier today, so I would make a motion that we pay the vouchers.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith, and we need a second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Andrews, and so, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. This is resolution 18173. Is that correct, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Okay, good. 381118, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter with Barfield, Murphy, Schenk, and Smith LLC for auditing services for the fiscal year end 2018, requested by Mr. Burgett. Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
Salute.
Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. McCluskey. Does this need a resolution?
I did one. Actually, the mayor can sign, he designates by law the auditors, and the council just has to authorize the funds, so.
Well, so what we'll do is.
We have a resolution if you want to go up one.
I really don't, so we'll skip that, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. We have enough resolutions. Finally, 121018, set the public hearing for the economic development projects requested by Mr. Jones and Ms. Smith, and so we will set that also for December 3rd.
Yeah, that will authorize the city clerk to file a notice of, publish the notice of public hearings required by the state court.
Okay, good. Thank you. With that, Mayor, we would like to hear from you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of letters I just wanted to share with you. If I don't sneeze. Great timing. Y'all scared it out of me, I guess. First is from the Laura Crandall Brown Foundation, the state of Till, and every year the city of Homewood participates in that by turning a lot of our public buildings till to bring awareness to gynecological cancer signs and symptoms, and they sent a very nice letter thanking Homewood for helping bring awareness to this very important issue to the ladies across the, not just in Homewood, but across the state. And then, secondly, the Homewood Public Library, I'm sure y'all probably saw the article in the Star, but they sent a very nice letter also to my office, and it just simply says "Thank you for your support and assistance in securing the funding for the library's building expansion. We're very excited and know the library patrons will greatly benefit from this worthwhile project. This addition will meet the needs of the community by locating all the public service areas of the library to be located on one level for easier accessibility by library patrons, providing glassed-in study rooms for students of all ages to work together in an observable and safe environment, expanding the courtyard for outdoor library programming and small events, and creating additional much-needed meeting space and storage space on the lower level. We appreciate the support of the mayor and the council as we continue to serve the city of Homewood and the patrons of the Homewood Library." And that was signed by Debbie, our director, and all the members of the board for the library, so thanks to all the thank you. They always have such a great name in the state of providing services for our library. And then lastly, I would just, I think y'all had just approved some things for Seafood King.
Yeah.
I got an email earlier today, you may have gotten one, but on November 28th at 11:00 a.m., you're invited to their ribbon cutting and grand opening, November 28th, 11:00 a.m. And just listening to the meeting tonight and previous ones, thinking back across the year with Thanksgiving coming up, we've been blessed in the city of Homewood, and we certainly have a lot to be thankful for, so just want to extend best wishes and happy Thanksgiving to you and your family. For those that tell your friends that you're gonna be out of town for Thanksgiving, we still provide that service. They can call the police department and ask their home to be placed on patrol while they're out of town. It's absolutely free, and it's a great service, I think, to our residents and neighbors here in Homewood, and if you're traveling, be careful, okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes. I'll remind everyone that we're going to do committee meetings next Monday night.
And I suppose we need to set finance at 5:00, and I don't know how long that's gonna take, but we have the entire agenda from this week in addition.
Plus other items.
In addition to about five or six more items that are on the referral agenda.
Then I would say an hour.
Okay. All right, so finance 5:00 to 6:00.
Well.
True.
Well, we could.
8 o'clock.
We could.
My partner too, I'm telling you.
Well, I'll tell you what we're going to do.
Through the middle of the bus.
We've now established how long that meeting will be, and let's see what the other committees need.
Because I will say, I don't think there's gonna be any Board of Education updates, which is the reason that we put the meeting at 5:00 o'clock, so I think we're cool if we bump it down a little.
I agree. Mr. Waltney, your turn.
I don't have much to add besides everybody have a happy Thanksgiving, thank you for your services. I'm thanking for your service to the city and for good teammates, and in general, city employees, I mean, just good folks all around us. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thames?
No, P&amp;D.
Really?
I think so. Unless you know something I don't?
No, you're reading closer than I have, I'm sure.
Okay, I'll go.
Just, I know it's a busy time of year, but everybody should have got an email, a couple, and then another one this morning about some meetings with the consultants regarding the zoning update for downtown Wednesday, the 28th. Just do your best, even if you can't be there the whole time. I think the more everybody's involved on the front end of this, the smoother it'll go on the back end, so that'll be here in the committee chamber, starting at 11:00 and going all the way to 3:00 o'clock. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Yeah, just a few things tonight. Let's see, just a reminder, I'm not sure if the mayor was getting at this a minute ago, but in addition to all the other services the police department offers, if anybody's going out of town and wants to kind of have their house just patrolled a little bit more often on their street, you're welcome to call the fire, or the police department, and they will do that gladly. Just a quick reminder that we have our, kind of our ward quarterly meeting, November 29th at 6:00 p.m. at Raleigh Avenue Baptist Church, and then you can pray for the band, because the high on Thursday is supposed to be 27 degrees, and so it's gonna be pretty frigid down there.
Up there.
Up there, marching through, yeah, New York City. And pray for us too, because we're apparently driving all the way up that way to see my sister, so.
Whoa.
Yes, sir. Mr. McCluskey? If you want to set it for 5:00, it would be great.
Oh, I'm going to.
[laughing].
Public safety, 5:00 o'clock.
How much time do you need?
I do have.
Take as much time as you want.
I've got five items. I'm gonna say 45 minutes.
Okay.
Whoa.
I think I'm with these.
The ones that you have.
With these, yeah.
Okay.
I wish I could be a fly to hear this conversation with you and your wardman.
Yeah. I'll text him as soon as I get done talking. And other than that, just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Good.
Did you say 5:00 to 5:45?
Yes.
I thought we had finance from 5:00 to 6:00.
Not anymore.
We decided to bump him down the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
No, yeah, we decided that was a good thing. First of all, so I have special issues, and it looks like I have four items that are all up for a public hearing the next week, so, but I think they're all pretty straightforward. Fence, fence.
15 or 30 minutes, Ms. Smith.
Let me take, let me, I think I can do it in 15. Let me do 5:45 to 6:00.
Good.
And I'm sure y'all probably already know this, but the Patriots football team is in the first, is in the third round of the playoffs for the first time in 13 years this Friday night. They're playing the powerhouse of Pinson Valley with a quarterback who is already committed to playing for Auburn, his name is Bo Nix, he's very good. They're playing at 7:00 p.m. at Waldrop, and the band is not gonna be there, as aforementioned, they're in New York City. So, the alumni band, they have organized an alumni band.
And the middle school.
And the middle school.
My middle school will be there.
So, it could be really loud in a really wrong way, but we need all, they need all the support they can get from the community, so if you have kids, come out, bring 'em, scream, yell, it's gonna be a good time, and I think that's it. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews?
Yeah, we are looking forward, my eighth grader will be playing Friday night.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, so I'm very excited about that. Again, I'm sure you guys all already know, but our boys cross-country team, back-to-back, to back-to-back-to-back, state championships, and the state champions, and the girls also state champions, and so this set the record for consecutive state championships, and as Coach Esslinger says, "There has not been a state championship without Josh Donaldson." He has been a part of every state championship, be it a runner or a coach, so wanna say thanks to Coach D. At the state championship, Will Stone came in first for the third consecutive year in a row, and he is only one of three kids that have ever done that in the state, and Lanny Phelps won for the girls, and we had some middle schoolers that came up and ran, and Maris Owen, and was it Sarah Darasoe came for the girls?
Yeah.
Sarah, and then Grayton Murray made his second year in a row running with the high school, so we're proud of those guys. We met last week, Mr. Cobb and I met with the BJC TA to talk about the Magic City Connector, and that has been approved. I think you guys all got the email about that, so we will be adding that. It's gonna take a couple of months to get that funding lined up through the RPC, but that's gonna continue coming from, over the mountain from 20th onto 18th Street, and it's gonna run up 18th Street, it's gonna circle Soho and head back, so that's gonna be great. Lots of trips throughout the day and Saturday service as well. I would like to wish the mayor a happy belated birthday, and also Mr. Jones, happy birthday. And also wanted to thank the beautification board for the work they did on the Christmas tree, and thank you all for approving that Christmas tree. Y'all, it was freezing, I mean, freezing, and we were out there, and Captain Sutton was wearing his shorts, but we were up there, and Keith Stansel was up high, you know, putting the ornaments on, and we couldn't get it all up, and so Randy Handley and his folks came in, so thank him and Berkeley for their help with that, and it was freezing and raining, and so they had to take two days to do it, but anyway, we think it looks amazing, and I drove downtown over the weekend and saw some teenagers in front of the tree taking selfies, and just had to email everyone and say how great it was, yeah. Exactly, the ultimate approval, exactly, validation. So, anyway, thanks for y'all for approving all that, and we should have, the wreaths are all here, and we've got 41 wreaths that'll be going out through the city, so, yeah, so that's, I think they were coordinating with Randy on that, but I do want to thank his help for all that, so, okay, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sure there's someone here on Public Works that would like 15 minutes at 6:00 o'clock.
Yes, 6:15 for public work.
Yes, and that would put...
6:15 to 7:15 for finance.
That's 6:15 until whenever for finance.
Yeah, until whenever he finishes his presentation, yeah.
Did you get all that, Mr. Burgett?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Great. With that, I just simply want to say, my family and I had Thanksgiving yesterday with 25 individuals crammed into our condo, which was most special, and so we've already had the privilege of celebrating as a family. You know, I think sometimes when people say this, it might be a little insincere, but